Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna call to order the City of Rainbow City City Council meeting for Monday, August 12th. And I'm gonna ask Jameson Jenkins if he'll lead us in our invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let us pray. Lord, we love you. We thank you for this day that you have so graciously blessed us with. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with one another as you would lead us and guide us as we make decisions for the betterment of our city. I ask that you would just help us make decisions, God, that would ultimately glorify and honor you. Bless these things in your name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it. I'm gonna ask the clerk if you should take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jameson Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 29th, 2024, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number six is to award the bid for surplus items and administrations. We've received no bids, therefore, we won't have any action on that item. Number seven is to approve the sale of a 2013 Dodge Charger with VIN last four, four eight, seven nine, for $4,410 by the Redfield Group. That's reference CM two, one, three, two, three. And I'd entertain a motion that we approve this sale. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number eight is to rescind item number five from the city, from the council minutes of July 29th of 2024. This will postpone a micro-servicing project until 2025. And I'd entertain a motion that we, we do that rescension. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number nine is a personnel change, and it's to hire Mark Echols for laborer in the Recreation Department, effective Friday, August 16th of 2024. And I'd entertain a motion that we hire Mark. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 11, it's ordinance number 596, and it's the sale of unneeded real property to Rainbow City Auction LLC in the Lumley Road Industrial Park. That's lots 23 through 26 and 29 through 32. And I need a motion to introduce this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration? Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jameson Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt? Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a roll call and include me?
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jameson Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 11 is Modern Woodman has a representative here that would like to come up. And it's Morgan Ingram. Morgan, if you'd just come to our podium, clerk could get you taken care of on your... Just give us your name and address for the, our public record.
Hi, I'm Morgan Ingram. I am Morgan Lavender's administrative assistant, and I'm here this afternoon to award a hometown hero. It is heartwarming to know Kenneth Payne under unwavering positive spirit and his dedication to helping others in his community. His commitment to always spreading positivity and lending a helping hand truly makes him a remarkable individual. It is clear that his genuine care for others shines through his actions, from mowing yards to offering assistance whenever needed. Being named the mayor of Riddlesban is a testament to the impact he has on the lives of those around him. The simple act, the simple act of asking others if they are having a good day shows Kenneth's thoughtfulness and concern for the wellbe, well-being of those he meets. It is evident that his values, he values human connection and generous spirit, are qualities that are truly worth celebrating and emulating. He is the coordinator for the annual Lions Club Pancake Day and Nut Sale, member of the Rainbow City Beautification Board coordinating the annual beautification awards, and the annual Rainbow City Cleanup Day. It is wonderful to see someone like him being recognized and appreciated for all of the positivity and goodness he brings to his community. He is our hometown hero.
Kenneth, come on up. I think she's got something for you. I may have helped them with that mayor riff. Just making sure you were here.
Thank you. Congratulations. And on behalf of Modern Woodman, we're going to donate $100 to any charity that we can. And I just think that would take it out of the bag.
Kenneth, smile like you're running a problem.
Thank you so much.
Well, look, Mayor Council, I appreciated everybody that, you know, we're just, uh, just kinda doing what I do. Some days I don't even think about what I'm doing. I'm just doing, you know. So, the three things I remember, gotta be a peacemaker, have a giving heart, and a positive attitude. That'll make you have a good day.
That's right.
So, uh, we are having a beautification board meeting.
Here we go. Shameless plug.
It's gonna be at six o'clock, so right after it, so a bribe, Kay, I told her I'd take it to eat after that, so. But anyway, I appreciate it. You know, you don't even, you just, you just do what you feel like you need to be doing. There's no, uh, I'm, at my age, I'm, the money's nice, but the money's not everything.
That's right.
Just, you know, just enjoying myself. So, and I hear every week, sometimes two or three times a day, when I plan on retiring, I've never thought about that.
Yeah, keep it that way. That's right.
Yeah, so, and I don't plan on, I, I suppose I'd stay as long as you stay, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
You hang in there.
What do we do in Riddlesban without a mayor?
That's right. I gotta have a mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We do appreciate Kenneth. Is there any comment from the council? We can take that now. Yeah, you can go, I mean, just about what Kenneth's done and what he, what he means to the city.
I will. Uh, so, I first met Ken, Jody Stanfield gave me my first, I guess you would say, real job when I was 15 years old at Local Joe's. And that was the first time that I really met Ken, which, hard to believe, that was 12 years ago. And he would stop in every day. Didn't work at Local Joe's, had nothing to do with being employed there. He'd stop in every single day, straighten everything up, make sure all the shelves were in order, make sure everything was in place. And the first time that I saw him do that, I thought, well, we've hired a new employee, you know? This is pretty cool. This, I, I like this guy. And so I asked Jody, I was like, you know, who, who's the new guy? And Jody was like, well, no, he doesn't work here. He just, Kenneth's a, a good friend. And then about a week later, I will never forget this, it was after I had turned 16, I was almost 16 when Jody hired me. I was down at Maverick's and he was out there cleaning up the garbage cans. And I thought, man, this guy works everywhere. Well, come to find out, that's just who Kenneth Payne is. He didn't work there. He wasn't getting paid to do that. He just saw a task that needed to be done, and he did it. And there is zero doubt that Kenneth is the greatest ambassador that we have for our city. Uh, he's been a role model to me since I was very young. And I mean it when I say that when I grow up, I hope that I can be half the man that he is. And I love him very much.
Anyone else?
Well, you know, we all have a comment about Kenneth Payne, the story about Kenneth Payne, or two or three stories about Kenneth Payne. But just like Jameson said, we love you, we thank you for what you do for Rainbow City. And we thank you for what you do everywhere you go, Kenneth. So I have your three things written down on my board that I read every morning. So, we love you.
Kenneth, we love you. I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to know how much I appreciate what you've meant to me since I've, I've met you about four years ago. It's been great. And like, like Jameson said, always helping other people. I, I too thought you worked at Maverick. And to, to see you carrying ice into the ice machines and everything, okay, wow. Is he on the clock? I didn't, but... Awesome. Hey, well, listen, thank you so much for everything you do, not just for, for everybody else, but for our city in general. Thank you, Kenneth.
I too got to know Kenneth four years ago pretty well, uh, when we came in office. And, uh, same story, I know this is regurgitating the same thing, third time, but, uh, I, I thought he owned Maverick, so, you know. Cause he was always there and, and still is. And, and in the world that we live in today, um, we hear so much divisiveness and negativity. And it is just a, uh, modern women could not have picked a better person to be a hometown hero. And so we, we love you, Kenneth, and we thank you for all that you do.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna thank Morgan and Morgan. I appreciate you guys for doing this. Morgan Lavender called me and said that she, uh, she wanted to put Kenneth up for it. And, and I said, well, you know, how do you know Kenneth? Cause we all obviously know who Kenneth Payne is. And she said, I was out putting cardboard in the recycling bins, and he just came up and started, you know, helping me and asking me how I was doing and that kind of thing. And so, uh, it's just that, it's that quick servant impression that, that Kenneth makes on people. And, and Kenneth knows how much I appreciate him, but, um, more than anything, I'd just like to aggravate him. You know, he, he didn't come last Friday into the, into the city hall, and, uh, we were all just, just wondering what happened to Kenneth. You know, did he just decide he was gonna up and quit? But come to find out, he showed back up on Monday. So, we're, we're excited, we're just excited for you, Kenneth, that, that you're getting the recognition that you so well deserve. And with that, I'll move on to number 12. And number 12 is a sponsorship request for the Alabama Croppy Trail to do the state championship here in Southside in Rainbow City. And, uh, uh, I'd ask what the, the tournament will be held November 15th through 17th. It's a three-day tournament. I ask what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion that we sponsor in the amount of $5,000.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 13 is, uh, reports from any of our department heads? Anyone got anything? I do, I do wanna say how much I appreciate the police and fire departments and all our other people supporting the, uh, the man that lost his life to a drowning. And Camp, just pass that on to your guys. And Craig, if you'd do the same, we, we appreciate y'all so much, and I don't think you really understand how much, really. Uh, and with that, well, is there anyone for a public comment? Anybody would like to have anything to say? Anyone at all? Okay, we'll drop down and, uh, give the council another chance to, uh, to say what they need to say. And we'll start with Mr. Hopper.
Uh, I, I wanna thank Kenneth. Kenneth, you're good people. You know I like you and everything. And, and the reason I bring this up and, and I, I held this close to me is Kenneth's almost like family to everybody. And if you don't come from a blended family, you might not understand some things. And I guess it's a blessing because my grandmother passed away last week on 31st. We buried her last Monday. She was 92 years old. But she wasn't my biological grandmother. She was my step-grandmother. I come to live with my parents in 1981, and we became a blended family. And, and even though she didn't live in Rainbow City, she's touched Rainbow City. You got me, you got my brother Jeff, and you got Coach Brooks at Westbrook, who coaches girls' basketball. And, uh, we buried her right out here, close to Rainbow City Lions, right out here, next to my Papa. But the thing is, is she, she, Kenneth reminds me a lot when I talk, when I'm around Kenneth, I feel like I'm with her. Because she had a servant's heart, didn't know how to drive. Soon as I turned 16, I had to do all the errands, cause I was old as grandson, naturally. But, uh, but Kenneth, I'm gonna tell you something, uh, you're like family to all of us and, and everything. And, uh, it's, it's almost, everything in Rainbow City reminds me of a blended family, especially this week. Uh, with that being said, I just wanna say, hey, school's started, be mindful. I know the school zones are crazy, um, and just watch out for each other. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor.
Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanna start by saying we have a lot of moving parts going on in Rainbow City right now. We have a lot of really, really, really big ribbon cuttings coming up that'll be announced very soon. Uh, very excited about our auction that's coming to our industrial park. We've got a ton of growth going on in that area on Lumley Road. And the entire look of that area is going to change drastically over the next couple of years, and we're really excited to see it. Uh, the only other thing I wanna say is, uh, Dr. Alan Cosby, our school superintendent, is here. Got a chance to visit with Dr. Cosby very briefly on the first day of school on Thursday, but we did not have Crispito, so he did not stay for lunch. Otherwise, I have no doubt that he would have. But, uh, I do wanna say, school has started back. Uh, and during the summertime, and I know Dr. Cosby will agree with this, it's really, really easy, even as someone who works in a school every day, to forget some of the circumstances that these students live in. And during the summer, the small amount of normalcy that they get in their life, which is only in the four walls of that school for a lot of them, goes away. And, uh, just this past week, with some situations that we had, we were quickly reminded of that. And I just wanna tell you that, uh, education is a lot more than being in the classroom, teaching students. And these teachers, I always tell them all the time, they have it a lot harder than I do. Because when I get tired of dealing with those kids, I can walk out and go somewhere else. And they don't have that luxury. And I say that in a joking manner, but it's actually very serious. They're with those kids more than they're with their own families. So just pray for our teachers and all of our educators as school starts back. And that's all I have.
Doc, I'd be glad to yield some of Jeff Prince's time, cause we know he takes quite a bit of it. For you to come up and speak to us, just kinda tell us how school's going, if you don't mind? Yes, sir? I'm sorry, did I say that, did I say that out loud?
Not loud.
I'm sorry.
Well, actually, I just on my way home and, uh, thought we were having a meeting, I'd just stop by.
We appreciate it.
So, uh, anyway, it's glad to be here. Yeah, school started well. We've got around 8,500 students in the school system and, uh, enrollments, uh, you know, we still, we, we still don't, we base that actually the 20 days after Labor Day. So we're still ways away, cause a lot of people are just figuring out school started. There'll be a lot of people just figuring out it started around Labor Day. So, anyway, but we'll get there. But, uh, I just wanna say I appreciate, uh, the City of Rainbow City and all that y'all do. Obviously, just done some work at Rainbow Metal and at John Jones, when the, uh, get the parking lot striped and things like that. You wouldn't think that's a big deal, but it is a big deal. And, uh, that just, again, enhances things. And, uh, obviously, SROs, vehicles look really good, uh, as well. And so, you know, I just thank the city for their partnership with SROs, with just all the intangibles that, uh, this, that, it doesn't happen everywhere. And I just appreciate, you know, what y'all do. And I was thinking about SROs the other day. And if I'm not mistaken, we've had full-time SROs in Rainbow City schools, provided by the city, ever since somewhere around 9/11/2001. So we're going on 23 years that Rainbow City has taken a vested interest in providing our SROs full-time at both schools. And I was, I was just thinking about that the other day. So I appreciate the commitment of the city, appreciate what y'all do. And, uh, you know, and I, I agree, you know, that whole corridor there, uh, on Lumley Road is, uh, is changing. And, uh, and, you know, the schools, we're gonna hopefully keep up with that change. I'm just glad, glad to be a part of it and glad to be a part of Rainbow City. I'm proud to be a citizen of, uh, of Rainbow City. And so nowhere else better to live.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'll take any questions.
Now, we're, we're good to go. It's, it's, it's our honor to get a chance to get a call from one of our principals to, for us to be able to come down and partner up with you guys and help them out any way that we possibly can. And, and, uh, you know, we've got a groundbreaking coming up soon with our rec center, which we, we built it with all intents, uh, intensive purposes so that we could augment our schools, you know? So that we could help with more space so that you guys can do after-school programs and, and athletics and those kind of things. And, and I know you and I, we, we, we talk very often. And, and it, it's just good to know and to find out how involved this city really needs to be in our schools, just so that we can make it a, a productive part of our society and our community. And, and I'm just, I'm just thrilled with, with having that kind of communication with you.
Well, I appreciate all of y'all, and y'all have all got my number if you need me, and call me anytime. And, uh, you know, be glad to do whatever, cause it's a partnership with not just one entity, it's partnership with all of us. And, uh, and so we wanna make the schools the best they can be, and I know y'all do too. And so it makes, uh, makes the city and the county a great place to live.
We appreciate it. Would you, would you talk just a little bit about Neighborhood Bridges? I mean, it means the world to me, but I think, just give us a chance to tell the people that watch us on YouTube and, and Facebook Live to, uh, just give them a, a little bit, a little brief version of, of how you see it from your position.
Well, Neighborhood Bridges is an organization, actually was started in Ohio. And of course, I know the mayor, uh, knows all about this, but it's an organization started in Ohio. And basically what it does, it meets, uh, we, we find the needs, uh, you know, as, uh, as Mr. Jenkins was just saying, find those needs these kids have. And they're, uh, we, we, sometimes in the past, they haven't been able to, to meet them sometimes. But now, puts them online, puts them, uh, in one spot. And so if someone, uh, needs to dump, someone may need a washer and dryer, and we've had those done. Somebody may just need a power bill paid. Somebody may need their rent paid. A lot of things that, they're not directly educational, educationally related, but they are related. Because if, if, if you can't have clean clothes, if you need a pair of shoes, if you can't pay your bills or whatever, guess what? Probably, that student's probably not gonna come to school and learn very well that day. So it meets those needs that otherwise, that no other fund source would allow you to go do that. But it just, but it allows individuals to meet those needs. And individuals with a giving heart, and we've got a lot of giving individuals and a lot of giving hearts in Edgewall County and in Rainbow City. And, uh, all over. And so it's a, it's a huge opportunity. So, uh, I don't, the, the website, it's Edgewall, Neighborhood Bridges, Edgewall County, I believe, is, is what it is. Actually, it's on Facebook. Needs are posted all the time. And, uh, and again, they're not just Rainbow City needs, they're countywide needs of various things. And again, some things you just scratch your head over, really, that's a need? But it, but those needs are met, and often they are met, uh, very, very quickly. And, uh, I don't know of a need really that hasn't been met.
That's right. Uh, I get a chance to work with Jennifer McGriff, and she does an incredible job with Neighborhood Bridges. But I, I think the thing about it, you know, when you don't know how to give, there are times when we just don't know where to put our money and put our, our, our treasure. You know, this is a place where we can go and place it in the right spot. Uh, they become the clearinghouse for us so that we don't have to go out there and guess it, guess, guess at giving. Uh, we get to apply direct pressure to the problem or the wound. And, uh, and, and it's, it's changing lives. There's no doubt about that. And it's a pleasure to be a part of that. And I, and I, I try to always encourage people that if you don't have a place where you're putting some of your additional assets, and I know there's tou, tough times, but there, this, it takes the smallest amount. And, uh, in, in my wife's case, she does a, a, a monthly giveaway to, you know, straight, uh, donation to Neighborhood Bridges. And it allows for them to go and direct that money without having to pick up a phone call, never having to, uh, post a need. And, and they're doing some, some really, really incredible work through that little, uh, program.
Well, and I appreciate, uh, your support, the city's support. And, uh, we had a meeting, I think, back in May, uh, together, Kindness Council. And, uh, and that's what it's about. It's about being kindness and meeting, being kind and meeting those needs. So thank y'all for doing that. And, and again, just wanna reiterate, I appreciate this city and appreciate what y'all do. And again, it's all about partnerships, and thank y'all for the partnership.
Thank you, Doc. Um, Ms. Bedwell?
Thank you, Dr. Cosby, for your partnership. Um, our children are very important to us, and we're very blessed to have good schools in our area that we can send our children to and, and feel safe because of everything we've discussed. So anybody that's involved, thank you so much. Um, just wanted to catch you up just a little bit, um, on, uh, some projects that are gonna be going on. Our utility board here in Rainbow City is, um, doing a, a five-year plan and a, a study about some, uh, different needs in our area. Uh, needs being some, um, sewer line replacement, some upgrades on some things that, uh, are, are aging infrastructure. And, uh, it won't be long until you start seeing, um, as Jameson said earlier, maybe some traffic changes and that kind of stuff. So in the coming year, I think you'll be able to see, uh, a lot of different things that is a positive thing for, for our city and a growing city. And one who needs to, or it's time for us to upgrade and do better for our citizens. So that's, um, uh, that's gonna be a project that's starting. We're, uh, our utility board is very blessed to have a new manager, and he's been on board for about two months? Three months? Three months, I guess. And, uh, Brian Purcell. And he is, uh, helping with this project, and we're just real excited. As a member of the utility board, I'm really excited about doing some upgrades and things that are moving forward. And that in turn will support, um, the growth that we have and the things that are coming. So we're, uh, we're just very excited about that. But just, um, watch for traffic, goodness gracious. It's always, uh, it never comes at a good time, so that'll be coming along. Thank you.
Mr. Prince, and you have two minutes.
Two long minutes. Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Cosby, thank you both for being here, number one. But number two, well, number one, actually, what you do, uh, for our county school system, uh, and how you represent us. Uh, it is very refreshing to live in a place where there is so much cooperation and partnership between cities and schools. That's not always normal in other areas. So we do appreciate you and all of your staff at the county. Uh, school has started back. I noticed that when I tried to get out at Maverick's. I was hoping maybe Kenneth Payne come out there and let me out one morning. If you could just run traffic right there at Williams and 411. Uh, and, uh, talking about the Neighborhood Bridges, uh, Jennifer McGriff is a very, very dear friend of mine and does a tremendous job. And I, I want to thank each one of y'all. I know there's three camp and, and Dr. Cosby and the mayor, I know, and I may miss somebody, so I won't try to call everybody's name. But just for what y'all are doing with that, that is, uh, my daughter started teaching this year. I know I don't look that old, but I am. But she started her first big boy job, as Jameson said, when he was 16, a couple of years ago. But, uh, uh, no, I had to get that in. But I guess I look at things a little differently now, uh, with a teacher and the family in my household. Helping her with her little classroom and, and just the, we went to the prayer walk, uh, Sunday was a week ago. And full disclosure, she's not working for Edgewall County Schools, maybe one day. But, um, that was such a neat thing. Uh, I think Meadowbrook Church was, their group, uh, was down there and did it at Tala. And so, um, yes, we have to learn to be a little more patient in the mornings and afternoons. Uh, traffic is a little different than it is for, from May to end of July, first of August, so. But, uh, just pray for all of those teachers, administrators, uh, everybody involved. Because there are a lot of, uh, as Dr. Cosby said, needs that aren't necessarily educational related, but there may be problems at home. And I'm, I get to hear some of that now. So, um, just, just pray for all of those people involved. pray for all of those people involved. Uh, Kenneth Payne, I already had you written down. I'm gonna thank you again for what you do. Uh, I think we all said what we feel, you know, we love you, but we do appreciate what you do. I want to, uh, congratulate the CUSA League, uh, boys' state champions that just came back from Warner Robins, uh, a little over a week ago. Uh, they did not get to win the southeast, uh, they had some heavy competition from Tennessee and Florida, but they won two games, uh, and was in the final four states in the southeast, and that's a bit, this is the second year in a row CUSA League has represented the state of Alabama in the southeast regionals, and that's just a tremendous honor for all of us that live around here. Uh, the Croppy Tournament, it's exciting to have something like that coming to our city, and I know that Southside, our sister city, will be a partner with that, uh, so, we, that, something to really look forward to, and we appreciate the opportunity there. And, um, my two minutes is up, so I'm giving a, thank you.
That's wild. It's like time stood still. Uh, Mr. Vice, I hope people understand that we, we cut up with each other all the time, and that's, that's a good problem for us to have, is that we, we actually appreciate each other, but it's because we get together and we do the work of this city. And, and there are times when we're actually serious about things, and this just happens not to be one of them, but, uh, no, Mr. Vice.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you, Modern Woodman, for the, the, uh, recognizing Ken. I know a lot of people do, and it just, uh, again, we've said enough, but you can't say enough. Uh, thank you, Ken, and thank you guys for taking the initiative to do that. We really appreciate that. Um, I would also like to recognize all the progress that's going on. Everyone's talked about it, but it's exciting to live in Rainbow City. To see that fence go up on Lonely, man alive. Uh, you know, because I know we all experienced it, some, but there's naysayers in every group, good people, but they'll say, I don't think y'all ever gonna start that thing, and, and, you know, I want to be honest. It, it's just, it was just, I think my heartbreak went up a little bit when I saw the fence and the piles of dirt. We're excited about it, and, um, Clark, condolences on your grandmother. Um, I know that can be an extremely, a tough time for a family. We're, we're with you, our thoughts and our prayers. I saw the first responders in action, again, unfortunately, uh, in a situation that no one was to see. You guys were phenomenal, extremely professional. Uh, thank you so much for what you do for our community, and not just our community, but the neighboring communities as well. Um, schools, again, thank you, Dr. Cosby, for being here. I'm in a unique situation. I work for the guy, and he's a phenomenal boss, but I would say that even if you weren't here. But not just Dr. Cosby, but all of the, the leadership teams in Etowah County Schools, and there's been a lot of negativity toward public education over the last year, a year, two or three years, I guess forever, what am I saying? Let me explain something. I, I've had, had students graduate from wonderful private schools and wonderful public schools, and I'm gonna tell you, the future of America is in great education, and you define, and it's up to the parents to define what that means. But I will stand by our public schools and our private school in Rainbow City. I think all the teachers do a phenomenal job, and I'm not including myself in that. Uh, the Bible's pretty clear on that. But, our kids are great kids, and that's the one thing that I think so many people want to bash young people for everything. And we did everything they did, and then some. You know, they just have access to being able to do it quicker with the technology at hand. But our students are amazing students, and they're quick to be blamed for things. So, notice when these young men open the doors for people at Publix, or at the Maverick, or where, we keep talking about Maverick today, they have charged them for an ad, but just notice that. We have some great kids, and, and I've noticed that over and over again, and, uh, and I, I can't say enough about our kids. But once again, I, I really love the opportunity the citizens of Rainbow City give me to serve on this council. And again, I want to continue to praise each and every one of you for what you do, and it's great having people out, and thanks again.
On Friday, August twenty-third, uh, we'll have the grand opening ribbon cutting for Super B Pharmacy to begin at ten o'clock at Rainbow Plaza, and we'd ask, uh, invite you all out on behalf of, uh, the Adams family. And on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, Thirty-Fifth Annual Julie Deener, uh, Five K Run and One Mile Fun Run will start at eight o'clock and, uh, go till ten o'clock, and that's here at City Hall. Uh, on Friday, September sixth, is the groundbreaking ceremony for, uh, our recreation center here in Rainbow City, and we invite the public to come out, and, uh, it's, it's your recreation center, and we'd like for you to come out at ten o'clock, and, uh, we're excited to include our schools as a part of that. Uh, the Challenger Learning Center, they are finalizing their groundbreaking ceremony in September, so we'll have two really, really big projects that we're gonna be gr, breaking ground on, that not only, and both of those affect not only our children, but the quality of life for everyone that lives here in Rainbow City. Kenneth, I appreciate you. I don't want to say it anymore, because you already know that. You need one more minute.
Yes, I would like you to come and look at on Tim Helms. We had three days last week, and they, it wasn't them who did the celebration.
I will. Uh, Tim Helms with the, and, and actually, it goes all the way up to the top with Jonathan Horton at the Etowah County Sheriff's Department. Our sheriff, sheriff allows Tim and, and, and those inmates to get out and, and clean the sides of our roads. And with, with the relationship that Kenneth has with Tim and, and, and their mutual understanding of, of what our goal is, and that is to keep a extremely clean city, uh, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate the sheriff, I appreciate Tim, and, and we appreciate those guys, and we try to show that by, by, by treating those guys as much as we possibly can, uh, with, with good food and, and, and an opportunity to come down here and feel safe while they're doing their work. And, and I, I appreciate you saying that, Kenneth. And, uh, just the last thing, if you get a chance to find a way into one of our schools, uh, find your way in through Neighborhood Bridges if there's no other way for you. If you're a senior citizen, if you don't have any, uh, uh, if you're anyone else that doesn't have kids in our schools, find a way inside this, uh, inside our schools, and the way to do that is through that, that clearinghouse of Neighborhood Bridges. Uh, make a donation, make a monthly donation, do it whatever way you want, but look for a way to serve our kids through Neighborhood Bridges, and with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here.